Good evening and welcome to the Oshkosh Area School District Board of Education regular meeting for Wednesday, May 13th, 2020. Has this meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Please call the roll.
Carlin.
Here.
Evans.
Here.
Garner.
Here.
Herzog.
Here.
Olmsted.
Here.
Peschel.
Here.
Thalagi.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will be calling on our two student representatives, Amalia and Kabao, who are going to be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So let's please stand for the pledge.
All right, one, two, three. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, ladies. I will have to admit that I have left the agenda in the other room, so I don't have that in front of me, nor do I have it memorized. I believe the next order of business is the school board president's report, is that correct?
Dr. Herzog, we are going to go ahead and begin at this point in time with our recognition program and converting straight on into our Employee of the Year awards.
Fabulous, thank you very much.
So going into our Employee of the Year awards, we are so proud to present to the board, as well as the entire Oshkosh community, eight very special individuals. And so we're going to go into a description for each of these individuals, as to why they were selected and what's so special about them, because we are incredibly proud of the work that they have accomplished, the support that they give our students on an ongoing basis, and the collaborative approach that they take with their fellow colleagues. So without further ado, I'm going to go ahead and get started with our first person. Please join me in recognizing Kathryn, otherwise known as Kat Noble. She's a first grade teacher at Washington Elementary School as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Kat has quietly but powerfully served as a leader at Washington Elementary for the past four and a half years. She first came to the school mid-year to teach a class of first graders who had experienced their original teacher's exit from teaching, followed by a variety of substitute teachers. Kat recognized the urgency for these students to have a supportive and consistent classroom community and worked to gain their trust. Since joining the Washington family, her first grade teaching partners have changed each year. However, she has accepted each new challenge as a chance to establish a friendship and collaborative partnership with her grade level peer. With each new partner, she has happily offered to be a mentor, helping them adjust to a new grade level and often a new school, so that together, they can ensure student success. Kat encourages collaboration across grade levels to promote continuity of learning. As a member of the school's K-2 learning team, she advocates for a shared dialogue, recognizing that everyone benefits from conversations that strengthen teaching and lead to improved outcomes. Kat has attended conscious discipline training and has implemented ideas learned with positive results, and also developed a training module on social emotional learning for new teachers in the district. As a result of her training, she is able to provide rigorous learning opportunities while teaching students how to self-regulate and achieve both emotional and academic success. She is often visited by past students who stop by her room to receive a hug or kind word. Kat has what appears to be effortless patience with children, offering empathy yet holding them accountable for their actions. Students respect her guidance and reach out to her in times of need, as well as celebration and just to stay in touch. Kat also serves as a mentor teacher to the university clinicians and provides ongoing feedback and encouragement to help them grow in their understanding of teaching. When it comes to learning, Kat continues to seek opportunities to grow in her craft. She attends technology conferences, is co-sponsor of the school's student-run weekly video newscast, and assists to lead the school's Girl Scout troop. She is a valued member of Washington Elementary School because she is so open to learning and willing to share. Her caring and compassionate nature can be seen and felt in all of her interactions with students, staff, and families at Washington. So congratulations, Kat. Our second person helped me in recognizing Thomas, or otherwise known as Tom Schreier. He's a fifth grade teacher at Reed Elementary as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Tom is a treasured member of the Reed Elementary School community and is beloved by students, parents, administrators, support staff, and teachers alike. He truly accepts students for who they are and takes time to get to know each individual student and their personal interests and strengths, and he incorporates this understanding to best help them in their learning journey. If you were to ask him, he would tell you that it is this aspect of his profession, the lives that he has touched and lasting relationships, that are most meaningful to him. It is this passion for the people of education that sets him apart from the rest. Coming up on 30 years of dedicated service in the Oshkosh Area School District, Tom has served on countless school committees over the years and has been integral in promoting a positive school climate in several school families throughout his career, including Washington Elementary, Webster Stanley Elementary and Middle, Smith Elementary, and currently Reed Elementary. He was always open to change grade levels or move classrooms to best accommodate students and to best meet the needs of each school. As many throughout the district will attest to, Tom's outgoing personality and inclusive nature has contributed greatly to school initiatives and building school families. Most importantly, he is a whole child educator who believes decisions must be based on the academic, emotional, and physical needs of students. He possesses great personal knowledge of the students and strives to aid every individual in their pursuit of success. He understands that every student has their own individual style of learning, and he spends many hours developing and coordinating lessons utilizing the district's standards to implement developmentally appropriate lessons with accommodations as needed. Tom's dedication and appreciation for education doesn't extend merely to his students. He has valued education and continued his own learning by earning his Master's in Educational Leadership through UW-Oshkosh. His continued pursuit of excellence has made him a positive leader and mentor, and he regularly opens his classroom doors to all students, parents, volunteers, community members, university clinicians, and student teachers. Great educators are not born, they are made, and Tom is no exception. Please join me in recognizing Sarah Klein, an English teacher at Oshkosh North High School as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Sarah ensures student success each and every day. She sees her students' potential and strengths. She believes in them, pushes them, holds them accountable, reaches out to them when they're struggling, and listens to them. Because of this, Sarah's students see her as a trusted adult and role model who has faced obstacles herself, but continues to be dedicated, positive, and hardworking. Her students realize, no matter how tough things are, that they too can get back up, face the world, and persevere, just as she did. Sarah's student success is not just because of their hard work, but also because of her dedication, drive, compassion, and belief in them. Sarah not only has high expectations for her students, but she has high expectations for herself and often goes the extra mile to make a difference. She previously worked to make written communications a dual credit course for Fox Valley Technical College, while ensuring that all learners were able to succeed. Sarah is also the yearbook advisor at Oshkosh North, which is a job she loves and has a passion that can't be matched. She seeks out students who will be an asset to the team, and over the summer, they go to summits to learn how to make creative, fun, and unique yearbooks that are full of memories that will last a lifetime. In 2019, the Oshkosh North yearbook was selected to be nationally featured for being a source of inspiration for yearbook staff and being one of the best yearbooks in the country. This was the first time that Oshkosh North receives an award such as this, and it was such an incredible honor. When it comes to doing more, Sarah not only puts in the extra hours for the yearbook, but also making a slideshow for Oshkosh North's graduation. She puts on an amazing and heartwarming slideshow for seniors and their guests to showcase the memories and final chapter of their lives at North. To say it's an emotional thing to see is an understatement, but one that is greatly appreciated by the students, guests, and teachers. Without a doubt, Sarah's positive impact on her students and school is remarkable. Please join me in recognizing John Omen, a technology education teacher at Oshkosh West High School as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Anyone at Oshkosh West that has worked with John over the past 20-plus years that he's been in the district knows that he is deserving of this award. John has been a dedicated teacher to his students while always keeping up with the latest technology. In addition to being an extremely hard worker, John is very supportive of his fellow colleagues. From sharing ideas to giving advice and explaining how things work at West, John tends to always go the extra mile for those he works with. In fact, in recent years, John has also stepped up to take on the role of Technical Education Department Chair. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, John regularly gives of his time and talents to help out when needed. For example, he makes flag holders every year for a group that has requested his help and has probably made thousands of them over the years. And he happily helps engrave plaques whenever asked. John also volunteers with robotics every week to assist however he can. And when something in the building needs to get done, John is usually the go-to guy. Going in above and beyond while always putting students and the Oshkosh West community first is simply John's nature. Although he has never been one to seek out or even want attention, John's dedication and impact in the district is certainly worthy of recognition. Congratulations, John. Please join me in recognizing Patricia, otherwise known as Pat Walter, a paraprofessional with Oshkosh Early Learning as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Pat's time and dedication to colleagues, parents, and students sets the bar for what others should strive for. Pat has served the Oshkosh Area School District for 30 years, working as a paraprofessional for the district's youngest learners. She has spent most of her career and early childhood working with students in both regular and special education. She has worked with many teachers along the way and has created long-lasting friendships. Pat is more than a classroom prepper. She is a dedicated individual to her team, and her personality is always being invested in the lives of those that she works with. She is a listening ear, a shoulder to cry on, and always there to give an encouraging word. And she is the same with parents, sharing something funny a child did or a milestone they conquered, and often sharing a hug with those in need, knowing that parenting is hard at times. It is Pat's love for the students that drives her. It doesn't matter what kind of day she has had. When the children come through the door, she greets every child with a smile and a sparkle in her eye. She loves working with all children, but often has a soft spot for the child who needs that little extra something. Always patient, always kind, always compassionate, always open to any ideas that could help a student reach their goals. At the end of the day, that is what makes her job worth it, to know that she helped make a difference in the life of a child. Pat is more than a paraprofessional that assists in the classroom. She is a valued member of the Early Learning Team who brings years of experience and dedication. The staff, parents, and students of the Oshkosh Area School District have been blessed to work with such an amazing teacher and friend. Congratulations, Pat. Please join me in recognizing James, but he goes by Jim, a Theobald Building Custodian at Webster Stanley Elementary as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Jim is one of the nicest staff members you'll ever meet. He is friendly to all students, parents, and staff. He is selfless in his actions and is always there when needed. He represents Webster Stanley Elementary's affirmation, "I am someone," as he is someone who is loved by all and shows the way to be respectful, be responsible, and be safe. Jim diligently does his job and doesn't waste time getting to a request as small as the need for soap or as big as the cleaning up of an emergency spill or a child's unfortunate accident. As he does his job, he treats others with such respect and gentle words. Most of the time, he drops what he is doing to respond to a request or is more than willing to help you along the way. He is flexible with multiple ideas to changes being made in the school and is willing to embrace them. Not only does he do his job, but he does it with pride and without complaining. When he isn't at the school, you can tell. His behind-the-scenes work doesn't go unnoticed, and Jim's work ethic is something all district staff should strive for. Rarely, if ever, would you see Jim sitting waiting for something to happen. Instead, he is always looking for ways he can improve the school environment, keeping safety at the forefront at all times. Jim's interactions with the students at Webster Stanley Elementary is also remarkable. He is considerate of their needs and quick to help whatever is needed, even though he may not have the time. He helps daily with positive responses to students when in the lunchroom, reminding and helping the students to line up the trays and toss unwanted waste into the trashcans. He does this every day with a smile and an amazing attitude. With such a positive outlook, Jim is loved and admired by both students and staff. Congratulations, Jim. Please join me in recognizing Carissa Smith, autism teacher at Oshkosh West High School as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Carissa is the new RISE Program teacher at Oshkosh West High School. The RISE Program, which stands for Resiliency and Structured Education, is designed to serve students who have autism, as well as significant trauma and mental health issues that they are dealing with. The program first started at Carl Trager Middle School and is in its first year at Oshkosh West. It is never easy to start a new program, especially as a first-year teacher, but Carissa has far exceeded all expectations, making the program a huge success for her students. Carissa has extensive experience working with individuals with autism as a previous-line therapist in the community. This experience has been a valuable asset to her students as she understands the unique needs and effective strategies to support individuals with autism. At the beginning of the year, many school staff anticipated the transition to West to be very difficult on the students enrolled in the RISE Program, as well as a challenge for staff to manage. But thanks to Carissa, that was not the case at all. Her students have been incredibly successful this year. This can be attributed to Carissa's ability to develop positive, trusting relationships with the students, her knowledge of how to help students deal with her emotions, her skill in providing a very structured, predictable, and safe environment, her flexibility and adaptability, and her willingness to collaborate and grow as a professional. One of the students that Carissa works with was at West for a very brief period of time, her freshman year. Due to their aggressive behaviors and refusal to work on academics for more than about 20 minutes per day, they had to be replaced into an alternate setting outside the district. This year, with the addition of the RISE Program, staff decided to try this placement for the student, and it has been exactly what they needed. The student is now working on academics throughout the entire year and throughout the entire school day and has not had any major behavioral issues at all. The student seems like a completely different person and is happy and thriving at West High School. Another example of success is the fact that the students in the RISE Program have been eating lunch in the school cafeteria most of the school year. This had not been the case in the past as students could not function successfully in a loud, busy cafeteria. It is so rewarding to watch these students in the lunchroom interacting with one another and with other peers who are not in the RISE Program. They are happy teenagers enjoying their lunch break. Carissa has been such an asset to the students at Oshkosh West in her very first year of teaching, and we are so excited to see what she will accomplish in the future. Congratulations, Carissa. And for our last Employee of the Year, we'll let that go back one screen, there we go. Please join me in recognizing Brenna, principal of Carl Trager Elementary as a 2020 Employee of the Year. Brenna has dedicated her career to ensuring that every child is provided with a high-quality education to help them achieve their greatest potential. As the principal of the largest elementary school in Oshkosh, this is no easy task. She works tirelessly to be present in every classroom to be aware of what's happening in the classrooms and to provide feedback to teachers. She meets with all of her support staff to ensure she knows what is going on with all of the students and provide professional learning that will continue to grow teachers. She is present at every single school activity and ensures that she can address every child by name. And she is present in the office to interact with parents each day. Brenna also spends additional time building a positive culture among a very large staff with celebrations, social gatherings, random acts of kindness, and lip dubs. She knows the importance of having a staff who enjoys coming to work each day and spends time getting to know team members on a personal level. Brenna is also a leader within the district and often works to develop solutions and create opportunities. She was a leader in addressing conversations about play in kindergarten and continues to advocate to support teachers in handling behaviors in the classroom. She not only supports her own staff, but her administrative colleagues rely on her for support with challenging situations, and she has mentored many leaders in the district. Brenna also values professional learning and regularly seeks out opportunities to grow in her profession. She recently attended the Teachers College Reading and Writing Project Administrator Institute to learn more about better supporting teachers with literacy instruction. From there, she has worked to create proposals, start book studies, and continue reading and learning to continue that work. She also encourages teachers to participate in professional development on their own and then takes the time to recognize them for the work that they are doing. Her time and dedication to the Trager community will be felt for years to come as she continues to encourage conversations for continued growth. Brenna deserves to be recognized for all she has done to support not only her staff and students, but her administrative colleagues. There is no deserving administrator. Congratulations, Brenna. And with that, Dr. Herzog, I'm going to turn it over to you to talk about our departing student board representatives. But again, I want to say again to all of our winners, our deepest congratulations, and we are so proud of you, and we are so thankful for your service to our students, your colleagues, and to the Oshkosh Area School District. Dr. Herzog.
This is always such a very special night when we have the opportunity to recognize our staff. Many years ago, I had applied for a job in the Oshkosh Area School District and asked a member of the interview team, what is a strength of the school district? And in less than a nanosecond, the response was the staff. I think that statement is still true today. We have an exceptional staff throughout all of our employee groups. And giving us an opportunity to recognize these people on this night is always so special. So we congratulate all of these award winners, recognizing that they represent a very strong and very dedicated staff in all employee groups. So congratulations to those winners. This is also a bittersweet night in that we have the... First of all, we have the opportunity to thank and to extend congratulations to the two student representatives who have served on this board throughout this school year. They are graduating that first week in June, so that's very exciting. In addition, we're losing them from the board, but they have just been exceptional in sharing ideas with us when we've talked about things that directly relate to students. And they've done such a great job all year in informing us of activities going on in their schools and celebrating the successes of their colleagues. So we extend a hearty congratulations to these two young women who have so admirably served this board and this community and represented their fellow students. We'll start with the North representative, Kabao Yang. As you can see from her picture, she has been involved in a number of activities and accomplished a great many things during her North High School career. First of all, she's served as a school board representative from North. She also served on the Oshkosh Area School District Facilities Advisory Committee in the fall of 2019. She was a member of the Youth Leadership Oshkosh Class during her junior year, initiated into the Hispanic Honor Society also in her junior year. During her senior year, she has served as the Oshkosh North Student Council President and also served on the Student Council Executive Board for two years, both in her junior and senior years. In her junior year, she joined the Polaris Honor Society, which recognizes students not only for scholarship, but also for character and leadership. And she has been a member of the National Society of High School Scholars. She was actively involved at Washington Elementary School with a Helping Hand project, which involved raising nearly $600 and allowed this project to donate two full cars' worth of books from Washington Elementary to the Winnebago County Literacy Council. Kabao has been an exceptional addition, and her name and that of her West colleague will be engraved on a plaque which will remain in the boardroom. In addition, we recognize our two student representatives with signed certificates by Dr. Cartwright and myself. And in addition, we provide them with a copy of Robert's Rules of Order, because you never know when you're going to need such a resource. So Kabao, we thank you. We congratulate your many successes at North, and we wish you all the best moving forward. Next, we recognize our West student representative, Amalia Smith, has represented Oshkosh North during this last year. She's been a student representative to the board. As I said, during her senior year, she too served on the Oshkosh Area School District Facilities Advisory Committee in the fall of 2019 and has served as student body president and student government president at West during her senior year. For four years, she has been involved in varsity swimming and track. And during her high school career at West, she has been involved in all four West musicals. During her... At the end of her junior year, so summer of 2019, she represented West at the American Legion Auxiliary Badger Girls State, held here at UW-Oshkosh. And over the last four years, she has been involved in five mission trips. She has won the Presidential Volunteer Service Award three times. Again, a very exceptional student, represented her colleagues very well and has made great contributions to this board. So Amelia, we wish you all the best going forward. We know you have accomplished many great things, and we congratulate you also on being a student who will soon be celebrating high school graduation. So thank you to both of you young women for your excellent contributions to our board and to your school and to our community. Thank you so much. Is there anything either one of you would like to share at this time with the board on your final night with us? Kabao or Amelia, is there anything you'd like to share tonight? Kabao or Amelia, is there anything you'd like to share tonight?
Well, I would just like to say thank you for this opportunity. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be possible without any of you guys helping us, you know, to be successful. And the experience that I've had on the school board has definitely made me a better person and has definitely helped me with my speaking skills, which is one thing I always try to work on. And honestly, I couldn't wish for the experience to be any better, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Well, I would also like, I would also like to thank all of you, because I have learned so much in this past year of being on the school board. And this, all the experiences that I've had with all of you will lead me to success in my future. And I really appreciate everything that all of you have done for me.
Excellent. Well, we thank you. This is an open meeting. You're welcome to stay with us for the remainder of the meeting. We always cite our mantra of students first, and it's important to us to have student representation at our meetings and to have two student representatives join us. So we thank you for that. So you're welcome to stay if you've got homework to do or other things tonight. We understand your, your need perhaps to leave the meeting, but you're welcome to stay through the public part of, of the meeting tonight.
Dr. Harazog, I do believe you may have some fellow board members that would like to speak as well before they exit.
Absolutely.
I believe Ms. Carlin had something to comment.
Thank you. Mrs. Carlin.
I just was popping in on the note saying that they were both so impressive this year. We have great students every year, but I am really gonna miss them next year because they did a fantastic job. So best of luck to you guys. I was just typing a comment in there. So thank you so much for everything.
And I do.
I wanted to speak.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I've always enjoyed the student reps. I think they provide a very valuable viewpoint on topics that we were discussing. And especially this year's class and these, these two reps have, to put it mildly, have been through some, some trials and tribulations. And they're soon to be alumni of the schools, and one of the things that alumnis do is they organize reunions. And it may seem like it's a really far ways off, but trust me, the time goes fast. And it's always a struggle to get your classmates back to reunions because they are doing their own lives, busy all over the country. But I think your two classes are gonna have very well-attended alumni just for the things you went through and bonded you with your classmates. So good luck to your future.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Is there anyone else who wanted to share anything regarding our students? Dr. Cartwright, I believe you were trying to share something, and I inadvertently.
My apologies. I'm just doing it to ensure that we are completely in compliance with open records. There was a chat, and so I'm just gonna read what the chat says, just to enter it into the record from Stephanie to everyone. She was saying, "They are both amazing, going to miss them." Thank you both.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Is there anyone else who wished to speak? All right. Well, I have retrieved my agenda, so I don't have to rely on my memory, which is good for all of us. So moving on to Board Administrative Reports, Board President Report, very brief. As I look at the school calendar, I see so many cancellations of opportunities for students to share with the community and with their, their parents. And we're not, we're not able to participate in those right now. However, I have been attending other meetings and, or learning opportunities, including the Board of Control from CSU Six, which met last evening, representing our board. They have been offering weekly webinars for both parents and teachers. I believe they've been doing this for eight or nine weeks. They're planning to continue these in the future. They've been very popular. They provide, provided learning opportunities for a variety of staff, including paraprofessionals in many districts. There will be meetings coming up soon with superintendents and legislators to help legislators understand some of the implications of what's going on in our schools and the impact of the Learn From Home program. The annual convention for the Board of Control is on June 16th. This is an opportunity for all 39 districts to be represented and to choose new representatives from those districts whose terms are up. We decided last night we would have a blended meeting, which means that the approximately 15 members of the Board of Control would meet face-to-face, more than six feet apart, and the other remaining districts would be represented virtually. Along with Dr. Cartwright and some other community leaders, I had a wonderful opportunity last Saturday to participate in the 100-year anniversary of the Amari, Amari Muslim Community in the United States. And there was a special program sponsored by the local mosque. The Oshkosh Public Museum Board has not met now for two months, as there are members of that board who do not have the opportunity to participate in Zoom meetings. So those are just a couple of things I've been involved with. I do miss the student programs, whether it's the art shows or the many music programs and other programs that are going on at this time. And hopefully, we'll be able to resume all of those in the coming school year. With that, I would like to turn the agenda over to Dr. Cartwright for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Dr. Harazog. And we're gonna go ahead and transition to our superintendent's good news report.
We're gonna start right away with our Grab and Go Free Meal Program. As previously shared, the district is committed to ensuring that no child or Oshkosh Area School District family member goes hungry during this difficult time. As of yesterday, we have served nearly 110,000 meals to those in need. However, to continue to meet the community need, the district is again seeking financial support from our overall community. Initial donations helped us to feed non-students from March 17th until now. However, those funds will be depleted in the very near future. Just as a reminder, the district is reimbursed for students only through, although we remain committed to serving entire families with the help of our community. Please see the screen for information on how to donate. I would also like to recognize the many organizations, businesses, and individuals that have donated already. Most recently, thank you to the members of the employers of the Oshkosh Rotary Southwest. During this time of at-home learning, we want to share some of the unique virtual learning activities taking place. Third graders at Oaklawn Elementary are staying busy with a variety of at-home learning activities, including science experiments, math assignments, and practicing cursive writing. These students continue to be supported by their teacher, who finds unique ways to connect and inspire learning. Third graders at Carl Trager Elementary School recently participated in a Google Meet to bake treats virtually with their teacher. Students were invited to bake an easy three-ingredient cookie recipe as a way for the students to connect and just have fun. Plus, while baking, the students worked on their skills of listening, following directions, math, and socializing. A Jefferson Elementary kindergartner is staying busy during at-home learning, working on music tempo with his little sister and conducting science experiments with the help and guidance of his teacher. Eighth-grade science students at Merrill Middle School have been learning about weather patterns and what causes different weather events. Students finished the unit by creating unique weather forecast videos for any location of their choice, and the forecasts were compiled into a fun weather mashup video. Wind Ensemble students from Oshkosh West High School each recorded their own part of the fight song, "Go West Wildcats," from their home. Then their instructor, Mr. Singer, spent many hours of editing to combine the 47 individual videos into a single virtual ensemble performance. April was National Poetry Month, and seventh graders at Carl Trager Middle School took part in a poetry unit. Their teacher provided Screencastify videos to model the poetry assignments, and the students were able to choose their own topics and develop their own meaningful poems. The students also participated in the Visit Oshkosh Poetry Contest, and one talented student was showcased for his work. South Park Middle School students enrolled in technology and engineering classes were tasked with developing a new soda design, including creating a can label and prototype and presenting it to the class. In the midst of at-home learning, this entire project was revised and completely presented virtually. The students were creative and innovative in their work. Although the Skills USA state competition was canceled, the organization recently held a virtual awards ceremony in which Oshkosh North received numerous awards and honors. Emily was awarded a national scholarship and state scholarship. And as a club, Oshkosh North was recognized as a gold chapter this year for the Chapter of Excellence Program Award. Congratulations to all those involved. We are committed to celebrating and honoring the Oshkosh Area School District class of 2020. As a way to help recognize their accomplishments, yard signs were recently delivered to every Oshkosh North and Oshkosh West senior. We hope the entire Oshkosh community continues to join us in recognizing the class of 2020. To our seniors, we are so proud of all that you have accomplished. The district is continuing to proactively manage our new at-home learning environment. On the screen, you'll see just a few examples of what has been consuming my time lately. That you'll see in the background pictures there, where I had the honor and privilege for each of our Employee of the Year to be able to deliver potted plants to their houses, which came from our Oshkosh North, that our Oshkosh North agricultural program. So we're very proud to see that. I also was able to visit each of our high school's student representatives in order to make those deliveries of what you were talking about, Dr. Harazog. And I was also very fortunate to be able to be a part of the process last Thursday and Friday, where we were able to pass out caps and gowns to our seniors at both Oshkosh North High School and Oshkosh West High School. So that, with that, that would conclude the good news report. And if it's okay with everybody, I would like to transition us over into our district administrators supplemental reports. We do have two different supplemental reports for this evening. I would like to ask for Dr. Gunlock to speak a little bit related to the first report, or anyone else that would like to join Dr. Gunlock, related to extended contracts.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright.
Well, good evening, everyone. This is something that we bring forward to the board every year at this timeframe. And what it is, is it's a, it's an approval of some extended contracts for some key staff members who are gonna be working beyond their normal contracted time. We'll, we'll of course let each of the, the directors speak in terms of the staff that they're bringing forward. The, the group that I'm bringing forward are the media specialists and media paraprofessionals. We've done this every year since our Learning Without Limits initiative was started. And basically, what this is for is to provide them some hours so that they can successfully and properly handle the reclaiming of the Chromebooks, getting them re-inventoried, getting them repaired, getting them ready. Obviously, we're, we, we replace a chunk of them every year. This summer, we're gonna be replacing the middle school Chromebooks, so we have those already purchased. They're ready. And the, this group will be working with us along that process. Now, the difference this year versus other years is we have a, a quantity of hours our paraprofessionals are, that have to make up. And this will give them the opportunity, several of them, the opportunity to do just that. So it does reduce the cost amount for that particular part. So the real cost is just for the media specialists who are currently working to organize the collection process. We have a few details left to work out, but it, the goal is to make sure that students have the Chromebooks until the last possible moment. So with that, I would turn it over to my colleagues who also have contracted teachers on this list.
Thank you, Dr. Gunlock. Ms. Conrad.
So on our extended contract list, we have several of our curriculum coordinators and members of our CIA team that are responsible for curriculum writing, leading and facilitating groups over the summer. Of course, that's probably gonna be done virtually, but that work still needs to be done. So you can see within the report, the coordinators and what hours they're going to accumulate over the summer. So Dr. Brown, do you have any, anything else to add to that?
I think you covered everything, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Perron.
I apologize. I was having issues unmuting. As you can see, what we do with the extended contract is we update forms. We also have our transition and our project search teacher working. We will be working on project life and transition. We will also be updating forms, 504 and IEP forms, and just working on compliance over the summer.
Thank you. Mr. Kemer.
Yes, I'm requesting extended hours for our school counselors like we do every year. The school counselors have a lot of work over the summer in terms of getting students scheduled for next year. These are not only new students who enter into the district, but students who need to change their schedule going into next year for some reason, whether it be that they failed a class or they need some sort of adjustment or some other reason, really. It could be anything. So that's the bulk of it. There, there's quite a bit of other work that they do over summer, and that'll get adjusted also based on students who are in summer school, which classes they pass in summer school and that sort of thing. So we also have our Alt Ed coordinator listed for extended contract, and that's Lisa Leader. Lisa does a ton of work over summer to get E-Academy ready to roll for the school year. And then she also has some work that she takes on as the Riverside Coordinator as well.
Dr. Harazog, before we go to our second administrative report, I'd like to turn this back over to you in the event that any board members may have any questions.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cartwright. Is there any board member who had any comment or question on the extended contracts report? This is a practice I know that's been going on in the, in the district for decades. There are many things that just simply cannot be accomplished during the regular academic year. And so extended contracts have been used to provide, to continue to provide services to students and staff and to get ready for the upcoming school year. Are there any questions or comments on the extended contracts? All right, seeing none, we thank those of you who have been involved with this, Dr. Gunlock, Mrs. Conrad, Dr. Brown, Mrs. Perron, and, and Mr. Kemer. Thank you very much. And of course, Dr. Cartwright. Moving on then to the second supplemental report, school meal prices. Schnorr and Stammen.
Good evening. As I said in my report, it seems a little contrary to be doing meal prices at this time. However, the USDA hasn't changed their stance that our price to full, the meal price charged to full-price meals has to at some point become in line with what our reimbursement is for free meals. So if we were to put on hold any kind of increase this year, it would just mean that we would have to do a larger-than-normal increase in future years. Also, Also, our food service program is really taking a hit with this continuing to feed. I mean, it's the right thing to do, but it isn't, it doesn't self-funding, it's a cost to the district. So I think when we do regain operations in the fall, if and when that happens, I think a meal price increase is in order, and I don't think what we're proposing is out of line. I also showed you some comparables from some other districts.
Dr. Schnorr, sorry, Dr. Cartwright. Really bad tonight.
So I have my apologies. And I just want to do just a, a brief explanation of what Ms. Schnorr was talking about related to the program. Anytime you, you set up a food program in order to have, in essence, to have a balanced budget, what you look at is you always take a look at the number of students for which you have been feeding in the prior year. And that helps inform how many staff members that you can afford, plus the, the cost of the food. So the meal price itself comes into consideration. And so when you do that, it's a nice balance. And that, we've been very fortunate in that our food program for the past few years has been a balanced budget. Here recently, with the program that we're doing right now with the Grab and Go program, the actual cost of the food is more than what, than what we typically would be expending for that. And because we are serving multiple sites, our staff to, to, to serve proportion is a little bit off, as you might say. In other words, because we have eleven sites right now currently, it is requiring us to keep all staff members, which this is also intentional due, due to some of the things that we are know that are coming to the district related to the CARES Act and some of the requirements that are within that act in order to seek reimbursements. So given that, that is why right now the food program is costing us more than the actual revenue for which we are receiving. But again, that is something that we are under review. And Ms. Schnorr and I have had conversations on how we're going to address that in order to ensure at the conclusion of this program that it, the budget is balanced for them.
Thank you, Dr. Cartwright. Is there any other board member who wish to make a comment or raise a question about the proposed school meal prices for the 2020-2021 school year? Okay, seeing none. Again, thank you to Mrs. Schnorr and to Mrs. Stammen for your report. And both of these written reports will result in resolutions at the next board meeting, I believe. Thank you very much. All right, we move on to the non-agenda-related public forum. Even though we are meeting virtually, we do provide opportunities for the public to enter into conversation with the board. The requirement is that anyone who wishes to speak makes it known by five o'clock on the day of the board meeting. And we had no one who chose to submit for this evening for non-agenda-related public forum. And that was also true for agenda-related public forum.
That is correct.
So we will skip over those two agenda items and move on to our one and only workshop tonight, which is twenty, the school year 2020-2021. Fees, Dr. Gunlock and Company.
Thank you. Joining me at this virtual table is Julie Conrad, and I have to give Julie special kudos. A lot of the data that was pulled from this was pulled through Infinite Campus, and Julie did a lot of legwork, kind of trying to make heads or tails of all this. While we have a very good system, it throws, it throws a lot of that information into a big bucket of funds, and to go in there and pull that all out is rather complex. So special thanks to her for that. We do bring this forward every year. This is school fees, the board has to set the school fees for the subsequent year. And I pause a little bit on this slide because of all the years that, that I've been bringing this forward, this is one of those years where our guiding principle of students first, really, really, you start to see some changes. We have been on a mission to try and simplify fees for quite some time. We realized we had probably one of the more complicated fee structures of most school districts. And we, we assessed a lot of fees by individual courses and a lot of fees that were instructional materials fees. And just for those who are watching, but also for board members, is, is there really are several fee buckets. One is called instructional material fees, and those are fees that we are allowed to charge. They're basically for consumable-type materials. Everything from paper that goes into the copiers to, you know, could be chemical supplies, could be art supplies, you name it. It's things that are typically consumed, okay? Those are what we call instructional materials fees. Well, we, in Oshkosh, we also added a different variant of that that were called course fees. And the course fees were charged by individual courses primarily at the, at the secondary level, but the courses that kids would take. And this created a very complex system that cost us a lot of staff time to constantly keep track of transactions going in and out. If a student dropped a course, we'd have to refund the fees, and it would just become a very complicated process. So over the, the past few years, we've tried to reduce the number of fees. And we're also getting very concerned that some, some of the students were taking, and you'll, you'll hear about this later in the presentation, that they were starting to make choices as far as what course to take based upon the fees that were assessed. So if their family could not necessarily afford the fees for a given course of study, they might not take that course, and, and that was something that was of great concern. On the other side, this is a monetary piece. So the district had gotten used to assessing a lot of fees. So in order to move away from that, you had to deal with the budgetary parameters. So the first thing that we had to do was really start to dig in, analyze the fees, and pull up some of the information. So what I'll do at this point is turn it over to Julie, and she can give you a little information about what she found.
Thank you. So the first thing we did is we went and looked into Infinite Campus because all of our fees are listed and accounted for in the Infinite Campus parent portal. And so anytime that a fee is assessed to a student or to a family, it is listed in Infinite Campus. And actually, this has been very helpful for us in the district because it's been able, we've been able to more accurately record-keep exactly where families and students are paying fees and expending dollars. So this is a little interesting fact. When we pulled the data on March 2nd, 2020, one million, twenty-five thousand, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars were billed through Infinite Campus this past school year. So there is a lot of, there is a lot of money flowing through the school district coming from families. And so those fees in that amount are coming from our instructional materials fees, 4K through 12, our middle school and high school athletic activity fees, the Twenty First Century Learning Center after-school program fees, so after-school care, driver's education fees, remember that our driver's education program is, we, students pay for that service, it's not a graduation requirement, secondary course consumable fees, cap course fees paid to UW-Oshkosh, so students taking UW-Oshkosh courses pay their fees to the Oshkosh Area School District, and we in turn pay the tuition bill to UW-Oshkosh, high school parking passes and fines, and then student general fines except, like, for example, library and media center books, overdue books, et cetera. So our proposal, after analyzing all of these fees, is to collapse the highlighted fees on the slide into one instructional material fee. So the other fees that are listed by the bullet points are ones that students are receiving, or families are receiving direct services for. But pulling together those instructional materials fees and the secondary course fees will collapse and streamline things for our families, for our students, and more specifically for the, for the school district as we're taking a look at this. One other thing to note is that fees that are assessed in the Infinite Campus parent portal, we had a ninety-three-point-six percent payment rate of the fees that were assessed. So going on to the next slide, here's what our instructional materials fees look like. I'm making sure we're on the next slide there. Our instructional materials fees look like, broken down by grade level. So currently, our elementary students, our families pay forty dollars per student. Middle school is at fifty dollars, and high school is at fifty dollars. So if we take a look at our total number of students by level, our predicted fees for instructional materials in revenue is four-hundred-and-forty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-ten dollars. But we currently are policying the Oshkosh Area School District is that for students and families that qualify for free and reduced lunch meal, we waive the instructional materials fees. So as of March 2nd, the collected fees for instructional materials were two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen. So if you take a look off into the last two columns, you can see the percent of students that paid that fee, along with the percent of students that are on free and reduced lunch. You're probably going to notice that there is a difference between the two columns. You would think, why shouldn't those two match? Number one, remember that we do have a family cap in place. And so once a family reaches, I believe it's a hundred and forty dollars, so if they have middle school, high school, and elementary student, and then one, let's say, one more elementary student, they would only pay a maximum of a hundred and forty dollars. So you can see that in there as well. In addition to that, families may apply for free and reduced meal status at different times during the school year, and so then may have paid the fee prior to qualifying for that status. Going on to the next slide, then we took a look at our course or consumable fees. And so you'll notice on this slide, it has middle school course fees and high school course fees divided up into like categories or departments or buckets. Middle school was pretty easy to analyze because for art, family consumer science, music band, et cetera, listed on last year's approved fee list, the amount was flat across the district. So if you took art, it was a fifteen-dollar fee. If you took family consumer science, it was a ten-dollar fee. And so as you can see, going through all of this, there was a total of fifty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-six dollars was collected from all middle school families for course fees for the consumables. Going into high school, high school is a little bit more complicated. So for example, in agriculture, you may, depending on the course that you're in, the course may charge anywhere from zero to a thirty-dollar fee. Or culinary arts, family consumer science, may be anywhere from a twenty-dollar to a forty-dollar fee, et cetera. And so you can see the range there, so it was a little bit harder to say that there was a one-to-one correlation between the amounts. We do keep track of inside of Infinite Campus, each student, when they enroll in a course and their schedule is set in August, then that fee is put into the Infinite Campus parent portal. And if the student drops a course, then they're refunded that money, et cetera. But it is hard to keep track of because there are a lot of fees. And if any of you are high school parents or middle school parents, I was once a high school parent, where we wrote pretty large checks to the, the school district, to the high school, depending on the course of study that your student wants choosing. So overall, the high school total is eighty-two thousand, four eighty-five was collected for a total of a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, forty-one dollars. So going on to the next slide, putting this all together, in nineteen-twenty, what we do is we try to forecast or project what our revenues may be from instructional materials fees. And so in the approved nineteen-twenty budget, the projected revenues were at two-hundred-and-fifty-four thousand, six fifty from the instructional materials fees and two-hundred-and-forty-nine thousand from the general student or course fees that were just listed on the previous slide. And then, as you can see, we actually collected two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand, five thirteen out of the two-fifty-four, six fifty. And then in student or course fees, we actually collected a hundred-and-thirty-six thousand, forty-one dollars. So I'm gonna pause, I don't know, Dr. Gunlock, if anybody, if anybody has any, there was a lot of numbers. I don't know if anybody has questions we can answer right there. I'm gonna pause.
Julie, this is Kelly. I have a question. On our analyzed fees, you had on there, you know, the different fees. I didn't see the AP test on there. Do we consider that part of those fees too? And then we just put it, you know, like we do, we send off the money to the UW for the cap. Do we send off that money for that too?
Correct. So, so for AP testing, it's, we take the money in and then we pay it directly to the college board. And we're required to pay for AP tests for students that qualify for free and reduced. So we, we budget for that within our curriculum and assessment budget. And then fees that are collected are directly paid to the college board. So it's, it's revenue, it's money in and then goes directly to pay the, the invoice through the bill.
Right, same as cap.
Correct.
Right, and just making sure, because it wasn't on that list. Got it, thank you.
Yep, yep.
I think Stephanie has a question.
I do have a question. I know that this came up last year, but during registration for paying all these fees last year and whatnot, the credit card was kicking in like a three percent charge. So when the parents would pay for these expensive bills, like nine hundred dollars, the credit card fee would be around fifty or sixty dollars. Is anybody looking into that for next year?
Sue, I think that one kind of comes your way because the business office works with the company that handles the credit card transaction. So I don't think what we've not, I'm, I haven't been involved in any conversations regarding the fees around the percent that we collect from, from parents that funds the, the credit card process.
Oh, okay.
Well, I haven't looked at it recently. I know that this, this, starting this last year, we changed how we collect a fee. It's a percentage of the transaction rather than a flat dollar amount. And to be honest with you, I haven't looked to see how that, how that's balancing out. So I really don't have a good answer for you.
Well, it's three percent, so like if you, a hundred dollars, it's, you know, not that much, three dollars or a three-dollar fee. But I do know a lot of families were reaching out last year saying, look, you know, I've got nine hundred dollars in fees, and my credit card charge fee was sixty, seventy dollars or something. So we might want to look into that next year if you are able.
And I think part of the rationale for, for us doing the percentage fee, and Sue, you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that we were not, we were getting charged more than we were collecting in terms of the fee. So it was that idea of trying to make sure we didn't, through this process, we didn't have a budget shortfall. So it would be, it would be good to take a look and see, did we balance the books on that, on that particular piece?
That's correct. By just charging a flat dollar amount, we were losing out a lot. This has helped, but I, as I said, I haven't looked at it recently, but I can look at it and see where we're at for this year. But you kind of have to look at the board's philosophy. I mean, being able to pay with credit cards is definitely an advantage to our parents. It's also an advantage to the district because we probably collect more fees. We don't have to worry about bounced checks or worry about cash. So it's a benefit to both parties. But who should pick up the cost of that benefit is, I guess, is kind of a philosophical discussion that probably needs to be had.
I think it would be sufficient if we just reminded parents that there is a three percent transaction fee and to come with their checkbooks if they want to avoid the three percent transaction fee for, you know, these courses that are AP courses, three hundred, four hundred dollars, et cetera. I don't think that that was well communicated last year.
That's a good point.
Is there anyone else who wish to comment on this staff report?
So obviously, we'll give, give people, feel free to ask questions at any point. But, but the, the next piece is, well, okay, so we have all this information, now what? One of the things that we're, we're keenly aware of is that we have opportunity gaps, both academic and behavioral. And one of our, our goals in our strategic plan is to narrow those gaps. We, we do know that students and families have reported that they choose courses based on fees, and in some cases, they have not taken courses because they can't afford the fees. The district equity audit revealed that economically disadvantaged students are underrepresented in the upper level and advanced courses. And it's our assertion that this is part of that reason. Also, high schools and middle schools, you know, doing, doing their good work will sometimes hold students out of activities based upon the fact if they have not paid their fees. That includes walking at graduation, you know, field trips, et cetera. So that also is an issue in terms of equity as we begin to look at that and really ask ourselves Um, so that also is an issue in terms of equity as we begin to look at that and really ask ourselves some of those hard questions. So we have the following recommendations. Now, for those of you who've, who've been around a while, uh, we've been trying to do this in incremental pieces. Uh, several years ago, uh, Tim Dolish was, was, uh, working with me and the rest of the administrative team on trying to reduce fees. And that one largely was at the middle school. We really started to scale down. But this really represents a sea change in terms of what we're, what we're planning on doing. What we would like to do is eliminate, uh, the majority of the, the individual course fees and, uh, increase the middle school fee from fifty to a hundred. Um, all course consumable fees would be eliminated. That's recommendation one. Recommendation two is increase the high school from fifty to a hundred and all course consumable fees would be eliminated at the high school level. Elementary instructional material fee would stay at forty. Um, we do have, you're not seeing it here, but it would be a family cap of two hundred and forty. So that would be the, the limit that any one family would, would have to pay. Uh, instrumental rental fees, parking passes, cap tuition, uh, a- activity and athletic fees would still stay because those are largely pass-throughs in a lot of ways. Um, we would determine the percentage of instructional material fee that would be allocated into Fund Ten and determine the amount that would go to the site that would replace specifically those course consumable fees. Now initially, we're targeting twenty four fifty per middle school student, twenty nine per high school student. Now, this is different than what we've done in the past because a lot of times these fees are collected at the site and they stay at the site. So that means two schools serving the same kids at the same grade levels could have different dollars behind them. And, and that was also a concern of ours going forward. That how do we, how do we level that playing field and make sure that it doesn't matter what your zip code is in Oshkosh as far as where you go to school and what you have access to as far as, uh, quality materials? So that, that is the recommendation. Now, the, the goal for some of this was to try and stay as revenue neutral as possible. And, uh, there's a few factors here that, that it's really important for people to be aware of. Um, while these are fee increases, we're taking a whole other set of fees off the books. We do realize that the economic condition right now is very challenging, which is why we are glad that, um, the instructional material fee would be waived for people who are free and reduce. So if you were somebody who is really concerned this year, uh, we would encourage you to apply for that designation. And then, then these fees would be reduced to zero, uh, in terms of the instructional material fees. Um, so that is, is something that we're, uh, we think people need to be aware of as well. So with that, I would open it up again for questions of board members of either Julie or myself.
Does any board member, member have a question or a comment on this report?
I do, Barb. It's Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. Mrs. Olmstead.
Dave, on one of the slides, the one right before the recommendation, one right before this, it has on here that, um, the district that our equity audit revealed that the economically disadvantaged students are underrepresented in upper level or advanced courses. What are advanced courses? Are those your cap courses and your AP courses? Because those are not, those they have to pay for separately. Those aren't part of this, you know, the extra, the fifty dollar flat fee because you have to pay for those separate. So what are the advanced courses?
Yep, I can, I can take that. So Kelly, this is, this is Julie. Um, so on that, uh, cap, cap and AP courses, you can actually take the course for high school credit without paying the cap fee or, because you're paying for the credit. The advanced level courses that we're talking about is for, um, for example, if you are taking, I'll pick on art here. If you're taking ceramics three, you're going to be, you may be paying a thirty dollar fee. You're taking culinary arts two, you're going to be paying a twenty dollar fee. You decided to take, and it, and it's for consumables and things that are rightly being consumed by the, the student through their project or through their coursework or that kind of thing. But it's those, it's those courses that, once again, students are picking and choosing what they're taking by, well, wait a minute. Does, they're asking the questions of their school counselors and of teachers, does that course have a fee? And if the answer is yes, based on what it is, sometimes they're not taking it. Um, another example would be anatomy and physiology, which is not a dual credit course, but has a twenty five dollar consumable fee because there's specimens and other dissection materials that are consumables that go above and beyond.
Right. Thank you, Julie. I just wanted to make sure that the public and along with myself understand the difference between an advanced class and it's, you know, that they're not one in the same, that cap and AP are not our advanced classes, but we have another definition of advanced classes too. So I just want to make sure that.
Correct. So it would be like an upper level or advanced course, like within a sequence, especially in the elective areas.
Yes, exactly. Okay.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Um, this is Liz Slodgy. Um, so I just want to make sure I understand the cap that was put on. It used to be a hundred and forty and now it's been raised to, did you say two forty or two?
Two hundred and forty, yes.
Two hundred and forty. Okay. So prior to this, there was a cap. It was just on instructional materials. But then you would, you'd pay extra fees for the courses and those kinds of things. Is that correct?
Yes. Yeah. The family cap before did not, it, uh, did not apply to the course fees. That only applied to instructional material fees.
Perfect. That's how I understood it. I just wanted to make my assumption was wrong. Thank you.
Are there other questions or comments on this staff report? I'm not seeing anyone looking to weigh in here, so I will assume. No, and I'm not hearing anyone and I'm not muted. So I, 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 I should be hearing something. Um, all right. So this, uh, workshop then on the twenty twenty, twenty twenty one fees will result in a resolution at our next board meeting, which would be on Wednesday, May twenty seventh.
Yes, that is correct.
Written reports we've already reviewed this evening. Well, with that, then we thank Dr. Gunlock and Mrs. Conrad for, um, preparing this report. This is a ongoing, as, um, ongoing report as Dr. Gunlock indicated. I believe that we are making some improvements here in, uh, limiting the, uh, family cap and including some course fees, consumable course fees, um, so that those who qualify for free and reduced lunch would also have, um, an advantage in this case because they would all fall under that umbrella rather than being outside of that, that umbrella. Okay, so let's move on then to the consent resolution agenda. For the consent agenda, the board has been furnished with background material on each item or has discussed it at a previous meeting. These will be acted upon with one vote without discussion. If a board member wants to discuss any item, it will be pulled out of the consent agenda and will be voted on separately. I would like to pull, um, B. Um, so the entire list then is the board will consider approval of one personnel, A appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries.
So moved.
By Evans.
Second by Olmstead.
Please call the roll.
Just a point of order. There should be a six C as well. Or I mean, a one C as well.
I'm, I'm working off of the, um, old agenda. I found my old agenda. I don't have the new one. All right. There's a one C, which is appointment of an administrator, if I remember that one correctly. All right. Uh, did anyone wish to pull one C? All right. So we would.
Uh, just for the board knowledge, um, we do have the candidate online in the event that you would like to interact with her prior to making any approvals.
Yeah, I'd like to pull a C then.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Well said, well stated.
Good evening. My name is Amanda Patsa.
Amanda, Amanda, hold on. We'll, we'll, we'll invite you in.
That's okay. We're, I forgot my agenda. It's good. We're kind of winging it here a little bit more than we should. All right. So for the consent resolution agenda, we have the board will consider approval of per, one personnel, A appointments, temporary appointments, resignations, and salaries.
So moved by Evans.
Second.
Think we already had that. Okay. Please, please call the roll, Mrs. Collins.
Herzog.
Yeah, I.
Herzog, I. Olmstead.
I.
Olmstead, I. Peschall.
I.
Peschall, I. Slodgy.
I.
Slodgy, I. Carlin.
I.
Carlin, I. Evans.
I.
Evans, I. Garner.
I.
Garner, I. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Resolution one B, be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district approve the retirements as filed with the secretary to the Board of Education.
Moved by Evans.
Thank you. I had asked that this one be pulled. Once again, we have several staff members who, uh, represent some of our, some of the best, uh, staff members we have in this district. Outstanding people, along with those we've honored earlier this evening as employees of the year and have I, have honored in prior years. Um, and so we don't want to, um, let these people go without some comments about how much they have meant to all of us in terms of what they have contributed to this district and to its students. Um, Jean Pollock has been a English teacher at North High School for many years. A few years ago, he was called upon by the students to be the, um, faculty graduation speaker. Sue Andre has been in the district for many years, primarily serving in roles related to, uh, career professional, including media assistant. Getting a little emotional about these last two. Teresa Collins, um, has been with the district as an administrative professional for roughly thirty years. Uh, has just done a commendable job of helping those of us who have chosen to run for the board, making sure we get the required paperwork filed. She's always on top of things. Knows Robert's rules of order probably as bet, as best as anyone in the district. And, uh, we're going to miss her a great deal. We're going to miss all of these people, but we work very closely with Teresa. And so we will definitely feel her loss. Mark Shear is retiring after thirty six years as a teacher in this district. I met Mark when he was twelve years old. He wasn't a teacher then. Uh, he was a student in, in my class. Neither of us knew that thirty six plus years later, Mark would be retiring from the district as a teacher. And the board president, uh, sharing some remarks with him would be his former seventh grade teacher. Mark will long be remembered for his work at Green Meadow, where he put on an annual, uh, wild game dinner. I believe that was with third grade students. And, um, again, someone who has made, uh, has left a mark, positive mark on many students in this district, no pun intended. Um, so we, we sincerely thank Mr. Pollock, Mrs. Andre, Mrs. Collins, Mr. Shear for collectively serving this district for over a hundred and twenty years. And we certainly wish, wish them long, healthy, and happy retirements. Is there anyone else who would like to comment on these retirees tonight?
Yeah, I'd like to wish all, uh, happy retirement, but especially for, for Teresa. Um, as boards change, you were the one constant in that room for, what do we figure out, twenty nine years?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty.
Twenty nine and a half, because you're leaving in July. So.
Yeah.
Um, anyhow, I think, uh, with your longevity of, of being in that room, I think, uh, I think you've got a one heck of a book that you could write on the goings on of the, uh, Oshkosh area school district.
Anyone else?
Dr. Harzog, uh, Ms. Carlin would like to speak.
Mrs. Carlin.
Yes, and I'm, I'm getting an unstable internet connection, uh, notice. So hopefully this comes in. I just wanted to say, Teresa, it's not going to be the same without you. And I just thank you so much. You have been such an anchor for our board in so many ways. And I wish you all the best. Um, and I also wanted to say thank you to Mr. Shear. My son had him and he had a little con- collection. I don't know how many of you know that, but little miniature collections of things. And, and he had a very big impact on my son. So congratulations to him as well. He's watching.
Anyone else? All right. Please call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, Mrs. Garner.
I almost waited too long. So Teresa, I've been on the board almost ten years now and, um, same thing as everybody else. It's been a real pleasure having you on the board and re-electing you as our board secretary every single time. Um, and I'm not sure if anybody else knew, um, but Teresa and her husband, uh, after they raised a generation of kids, they adopted another one. And, um, it's, I got to witness a little bit of that, just, just a bit. And, um, it's always hit me, the generosity, um, and, and what you and your husband are doing. And it's really inspiring. So we're going to miss you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Now, I just will remind the board, uh, approval of these retirements does take a majority vote.
I'm gonna reluctantly, yeah, I don't know yet.
I'm, I'm, think about that.
Can we just pull one or two off of there? Can we say yes or no? Can we pick it apart?
Here, we can. We can separate the question.
Hey, can I call the roll?
Yeah.
I think she wants to call the roll where we change our minds. All right.
Olmstead?
Reluctantly, I.
Olmstead, I. Peschall?
I.
Peschall, I. Slodgy?
I.
Slodgy, I. Carlin?
I, because I have to.
Carlin, I. Evans?
I.
Evans, I. Garner?
I.
Garner, I. Herzog? I.
Herzog, I. Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And consent, uh, excuse me, uh, resolution one C, be it resolved that the Oshkosh area school district uh, adopt the, I don't have the exact wording in front of me. Mrs.
Appointment of administrator.
Do you have the wording for that one? Help me out that, with that for Dr. Cartwright.
Appointment of administrator.
Thank you. Uh, approve appointment of administrator. We need a motion in a second.
So moved by Evans. Second by Peschall.
Second by Olmstead.
All right. Dr. Cartwright, I believe you wanted to weigh in on this one.
Yes, ma'am, if possible. And, um, so I want to bring forward to the board, uh, like I did by the name of, um, Amanda Patsa. Um, she is currently employed in the Appleton area school district, uh, where she currently for the past two years has served as dean of students at Badger Elementary. Um, prior to that, she was a fifth, sixth grade teacher, um, over at Foster Elementary. And then prior to that, a third grade teacher over at Columbus Elementary. So as you can see, she's a long time Appleton, um, but we, our Appleton, uh, community. Um, but we are Appleton, um, community member and I feel as though we're, we're really, um, I'm very proud and very pleased to say that I feel as though we're, um, we may be taking one of their brightest and best into the Oshkosh area school district. Her references came back extremely glowing. Um, she's a very well-balanced individual who has a, a deep passion for understanding student needs from a multitude of levels. So it's not only from the academic standpoint, but also from that behavioral standpoint and mental health standpoint. Um, during her interview, she was highly articulate, uh, both interviews. Um, and for this, uh, Jefferson Elementary School, for their panel, um, she, she definitely rose to the top. Um, as you might say, as far as before she even came to the second round of, of, um, interviews with me and the executive team. So, um, if it will please the board, I would like to present to you Amanda to just maybe give a, a brief overview of herself to you if you would like.
Very good.
Amanda.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Amanda Patsa and I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to serve the Jefferson and the Oshkosh area school district community. Um, I'm excited to bring my professional background and my expertise to this position. And I am extremely excited to get started. So thank you again for the wonderful opportunity.
Very good. Any other comments or questions?
Could we, uh, see her? I, I just have a black screen on mine.
Yeah, I'm not sure why that's happening. My screen is showing that I have it on. So I apologize for that.
That's not your fault. Dave's our tech guy.
Usually when this happens, there's a camera cover over the little camera that sometimes gets slid into place by accident. Um, I can't, I can't do much about that one. But it's showing her videos. Okay, her video went off and now turned back on, so hmm.
It was on earlier.
Yeah.
Yeah, I apologize.
Well, we'll have to look forward to the real photo in the future.
Sounds great. Thank you so much.
And Amanda from Stephanie Carlin, she wants to share a welcome to the community.
Anyone else? Oh, Mrs. Collins, please call the roll.
Peschall?
I.
Peschall, I. Salaji?
I.
Salaji, I. Carlin?
I.
Carlin, I. Evans?
I.
Evans, I. Garner?
I.
Garner, I. Herzog?
I.
Herzog, I. Olmstead?
I.
Olmstead, I. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. Are there any individually considered resolutions for this evening's meeting? I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. I, I heard something, but I couldn't make out the, the words.
It's feedback. Um, if, for those who are not speaking, if you do not mind, uh, muting your mic and that will help prevent that problem.
Is there anyone, uh, who had an individually considered resolution for this evening? Okay, singing and hearing none, um, request for future agenda items. Anyone? Other than a photo of Amanda Patsa? All right, moving on. Are there any announcements tonight? I actually have a couple of announcements. The Wisconsin Association of School Boards is hosting, uh, two spring workshops. One is tomorrow evening called Understanding Your Legal Roles and Responsibilities. This would be a good overview as well as a good, uh, reminder of what boards do, how boards exercise their statutory powers and duties, public records law, conflicts of interest. Uh, there is a fee for this. It's sixty-five dollars. You can sign up, um, on the WASB website, which is WASB.org. I would also point out that they have an updated, uh, COVID nineteen, uh, page, which, uh, provides a lot of information and is getting a lot of good reviews around the state for how up to date they are and, um, the information being shared there. I also wanted to point out that just before this meeting, I learned that the Grand Opera House in cooperation with Oshkosh North, Oshkosh West and Lourdes is sponsoring the first of a, of a number. I don't know the total number, but a number of student recitals, uh, music students who had prepared, music, uh, programs or, or pieces to share are being featured at, as we speak, on the Grand Opera House website. I know that we as a board, as board members can't watch them right now, but I believe that these will be available on the Grand Opera House website and there will be additional recitals. So, um, the public may certainly want, want to, uh, tune into those. And, and if you need a music fix from our students, uh, this would be a good opportunity to, to do that this month. Are there any other announcements?
And Dr. Harzog, just a follow-up for the Grand Opera House. Uh, they do have a Facebook presence and, um, those are typically recorded and available on their page.
Thank you very much. Good to know. Any other announcements? All right then, moving on, we will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session under Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five per and one per and E, a purchase of property.
Moved by Evans.
Second by Garner.
You guys are quick tonight. All right, please call the roll.
Sorry, Salaji?
I.
Salaji, I. Carlin?
I.
Carlin, I. Evans?
I.
Evans, I. Garner?
I.
Garner, I. Herzog?
I.
Herzog, I. Olmstead?
I.
Olmstead, I. Peschall?
I.
Peschall, I. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn to executive session. If you go, if board members, uh, refer to their calendars, you will find the, um, Zoom address to get into the executive session for tonight. Thank you all very much and thank you, Mrs. Collins.
Thank you.